The time is coming, the time has come and passed. For our Monday, June 18th, 2018, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Newsome, Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Belko. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Muzio.
Present.
Alderman Villobos.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. I didn't see you. Everyone, could you please stand for invocation while Keegan City Council, where Reverend Eileen Shanley Roberts will lead. I would also ask that our airmen and our boy scouts come up and right after the invocation will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up. Right here, stand right in front. And he's excited to be here. Right there with him, young man.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, bless the leaders of our community, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to all others who work with us. We ask Father, to send down upon those who hold office in this community, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. The flags are this way.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, Mayor's comments. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Cooling centers. As we get into the warmest days of the year, please remember to hydrate well and watch out for the warning signs of overheating. There are a number of cooling centers available throughout the city of Waukegan. To name a few, our Waukegan Public Library, our Waukegan Township Park Place, our Waukegan Park District Belvedere Rec Center, Waukegan Park District Jack Benny Center, Illinois Department of Human Services located at 2,000 North Lewis Avenue. If we have omitted any, please let us know. And at the same times, check on those who might be sick and potentially shut in at this time. Thank you. Athletic Hall of Fame, congratulations to the 2018 inductees to the Waukegan Athletic Hall of Fame. Congratulations to Phil Angelos, Tracy Baron, Remil Guzman, Leonard Hidderson, Pat Kelly. Is that Pat Kelly with us?
Yeah.
Pat Kelly, Brian Traxler? Oh, congratulations to Trax. Congratulations to all, to those individuals and their families. I think I was a year older than Pat and Brian, I think, right?
You're younger than me, so.
Yeah, well, same age as I am. Congratulations to them. Speaking of athletic excellence, a shout-out to Cheyenne White from Waukegan, who recently won the NAIA Outdoor National Title in the Triple Jump for Indy, Indiana Tech. Alderman Newsome's cousin. Oh, that Cheyenne? Okay, yeah, congratulations. Wow, she's a college student. She's getting older, of course. You know, before we go on, I forgot, one of our airmen, airwoman is a Waukegan graduate. Stand up. Hey, hey, give it up. Thank you. I was supposed to mention that. Thank you very much. Food drive. Waukegan Public Works Department is participating in a summer food drive called Lake County Responding to Hunger. This is part of a friendly county-wide competition amongst public works departments with the goal of creating the largest annual food drive in Lake County. The clerk's office has a collection box outside of, outside, outside of window one, where you can donate. This competition will last until June, July 24th, when the food collected will be transported to Lake County Fairgrounds as part of the annual Lake County Public Works Department event. Please consider donating to help fight hunger. Recycling. We continue to remind residents that you can recycle tires and electronics at the public works facility located at 1700 Macquarie Road from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The list of recyclable items are available online or, and also in City Hall. Do not leave these items on our parkway, please. And again, mainly the big televisions, tires without the rims. And we're also taking computers, is that right, Mike? Computers, those things right there. Those are the biggest items that we often see out on our parkways. They are free. Drop them off, 1700 Macquarie Road. I will say this, we're doing a much better job of that, but we want to continue to get, you know, kind of zero tolerance on it. These items, if you can bring them to the parkway, you can leave them in your car, you can bring them right over. We're taking them all. So thank you very much for your help. As a reminder, in January, City Council updated our ordinance for water billing, changing it from quarterly to monthly billing. Again, we have updated our water billing process, changing it from a quarterly billing system to a monthly billing system. Residents and businesses should have begun receiving your monthly water bills as early as June, is that correct? June? We recommend, we do recommend signing up for the automatic bank payments. For any questions, please contact our water department and they'll be happy to help you. The number is 847-360-0535. Upcoming events. Independence Parade, the Independence Parade is Sunday, July 1st. Again, Sunday, July 1st, beginning at 1:00 p.m. It's kickoff time, correct David?
Yes, sir.
All right. Independence Parade is Sunday, July 1st, and kickoff time is 1:00 p.m. on Sheridan Road by Franklin Street and ending at Bowen Park. We look forward to seeing everyone out there. Fireworks. Our fireworks, however, will be on the 4th of July, not, not July the 1st, on the 4th of July. Will be Wednesday, July 4th, starting at 9:30 p.m. over, over by the harbor. Summer concerts. This, this summer, there are a lot of free concerts in Waukegan. The Waukegan Band Concerts are Tuesday, 7:30 p.m. at Steiner Pavilion. The Plaza Series is the 4th Friday of each month at 6:00 p.m. at Jack Benny Plaza. The Waukegan Public Library's Courtyard Concerts are Friday, Fridays at noon. That's every Friday, right Jen?
Every Friday.
Every Friday.
Throughout, um.
Throughout August? Throughout August. And most of the musicians are mainly local? A lot of local. Music at Washington Park is Friday, June 22nd at 6:00 p.m. Washington Park is the Park South Avenue in, okay.
Washington. Washington Street.
Yeah, but it's really, yeah, it's really. Yeah, it's Washington Park, but was it South Park and Glen Rock? Right there, that's, South Park and Glen Rock for the Waukegan nights who are, kind of remember Red State.
Robert Hall.
No, he's dating himself. For those who are from Waukegan, the old Robert Hall is the laundromat now, but it's the former Robert Hall, wow, I forgot all about that.
Arnold's.
Oh, Arnold's, yeah. Yeah, every now and you got to reminisce up here a little bit. That's good stuff, right there. Harbor Fest. Harbor Fest at the Harvest Edge runs two days, starting Saturday, June 30th, with food vendors and a lineup of live entertainment from early afternoons until late at night. For, for further information about these events, and to see all upcoming events, check out the city's website, waukeganil.gov, or, and explore Waukegan. Waukegan Proud. We have a Waukegan Proud Award to be given. The city of Waukegan has been lucky enough to have enjoyed the service of a dedicated leader. We are sad to lose her as she moves on to new adventures, but Reverend, yeah, I know she's looking shocked. Eileen Shanley Roberts, we want to take this moment to present you an Waukegan Proud Award for your many years of service. Come on up. You weren't ready for that, were you?
No, I was not.
Let's go over here. We, we heard about you leaving us, and all the many things that have been a part of Waukegan, from first day you stepped in, tough charge on many different fronts. We appreciate that. And as English like to come into our community and don't talk about it, you've been there. Now, we hear that you're leaving, obviously we're sad. Of course, we had a vote and you stayed, but I guess we're outvoted. It'll be extremely proud to have you in our community and the legacy you have left, and the mark that you have left in Waukegan that will be forgotten. With that being said, the city of Waukegan does hereby present Reverend Eileen Shanley Roberts this Waukegan Proud Award for her service and record and practice as a church and selfless, dedicated, committed to Waukegan. Signed by myself, Janet, and all of us, approved by this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And here you go.
City Council and people of Waukegan, thank you so much. This is a huge honor. It's easy to do work when you have such great people to stand behind you and with you and carry forward the mission of making this place a better place for all people to live. That's what's really important. This is not about me, this is about all of our shared work together, but thank you. As I move on to training future leaders of the church at Bexley Seaberry Seminary, I'm not moving too far away, I'll still be in Lake County, so you will probably see me around because I will always be a champion for Waukegan. Thank you.
We have to take a picture of that. Please join me, please. Thank you very much. You got the Waukegan, you need?
Please step forward.
Yes, ma'am, you got it.
Everybody, we're looking right here, we're happy.
Thank you. Tonight, we are honored to invite up from the United States Air Force Staff Sergeant Bradford Airman DeSala, and to speak to Waukegan about the United States Air Force. Please join us at the podium. And I missed someone. Who was the other young man?
Airman Trayber.
Airman Trayber, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I'm Staff Sergeant Bradford. I am currently out of Caneyak, Illinois. I was originally supposed to come to the Waukegan office right off of Green Bay, but unfortunately they did move. But I am still a recruiter for the Waukegan area. I do cover all of Lake County. So if you ever, if you don't need anybody who might want to join or make a difference in their life, I would be the first to talk to. I've been here since November of 2014, so a little short of four years. And since I've been here, Waukegan has always been one of my major focuses. And Waukegan High School, quite often, in fact, I have a very good relationship with Major Bell, with the junior ROTC program over there. They may be Army, but a lot of them in the former Air Force. In fact, as stated before, Airman DeSala was a Waukegan graduate. She didn't do the ROTC program, correct, but she's still, deciding to go with it. And I really, I'm here to make sure that I'm available for anybody that may think they want to go into something like this. The mayor and I were speaking just before this, three major focuses were the labor force, schooling, and, and military. And I might be able to provide some, I think we might be the best. I have left some cards out in the front, if anybody has thought about joining or might think of a, a young individual that might be interested. I'm also always available for questions as well. So, as I've said, I have Airman DeSala here, and Airman Trayber as well. I asked them to take just a minute to kind of speak on what they were doing prior to the military, and what they're doing now, and how that big of a change can happen.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Airman John DeSala, and I'd like to say, I'm so happy to be back. Thank you very much, Sam Cunningham, for the warm welcome. I was a graduate from Waukegan High School, Washington campus, and throughout high school, I always was thinking about my future and what I wanted to do, and I finally decided to go the military route and join the Air Force because I was inspired by my grandfather, who was a World War II Army veteran. And so because of him, I am here, and I just want to shout out to him, say thank you. So I joined straight out of high school, but before I enlisted, I was working as a hotel clerk at America's Best Value Inn, right on Green Bay Road. So thank you to them too, for helping me develop my confidence skills and people's skills, because in the Air Force, you do meet a lot of people, and it's just really cool to hear everyone's stories and where they've come from. I always never forget to mention that I come from Waukegan. I always bring home with me wherever I go, and never have I thought that I would be working on some of the most expensive aircrafts and well-known aircrafts. I am a C-130 avionics technician, and that has taught me so much already, and I'm looking forward to what else the Air Force has to offer for me.
Father, my name is, I am Airman Trayber. I graduated high school about two years ago with a high school diploma and an EMT license. What I wanted to do then is become a firefighter, but at the time, it was really hard to get on an apartment, but I also wanted to join the military. At the time, I didn't know that the military had firefighters, until my recruiter pointed out, you want to be a firefighter on the job sheet? And I'm like, oh, okay. So, six days before Christmas, I was sent to, I was sent down to Texas for basic training, completed that, then I went to San Angelo, Texas for a fire academy, and now, at the end of the month, I'm being sent to Japan to work a fire department. So honestly, the Air Force has given me so many opportunities, and even during that time, I set, I set up, I set up future investments for my retirement, and I even set up bank accounts for that. So honestly, the Air Force gave me a lot of opportunities, and it still is, so I'm going to stick with that for a while. Thank you guys again, very much for having me, and if you ever need anything from us, please let me know.
Thank you, thank you for, yeah, thank you for joining us. That's exciting. Fire Department and Police Department would like to bring up Fire Chief Bridges, Police Chief Wallace, to highlight some Waukegan, Waukegan's outstanding firemen and policemen. Chiefs, DC.
Mayor, members of City Council, and community members here tonight, and also at home, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce you to one of our officers, who was named the Waukegan Exchange Club Officer of the Year. This will be our Supervisor of the Year, and it's my great privilege and honor to introduce to you tonight Lieutenant Michael Mandrum. The way it works, Mike was selected by his supervisors, and also from the chief's office, and it was written and nominated. The way they do it is the Exchange Club receives nominations from the Police Department and also the Fire Department, and they select two officers from the Police Department, two officers from the Fire Department. As well, they also select two officers, or I should say, a deputy and a supervising deputy from Lake County Sheriff's Office. I'm honored to have Mike here tonight. Mike's an 18-year member of the Waukegan Police Department, and probably the thing that sticks out in my mind, the most recent thing, that Mike has done a million things at the Waukegan Police Department. It's my honor to have him here because I can remember prior to 18 years ago, while he was still a student at Western Illinois University, he was an intern at the Police Department. It's a huge program, it's a huge benefit to have Mike come back, partially, I should say mostly because of Mike, who Mike is and his conscientious efforts, his compassion. Most recently, the biggest contribution he's had to the Police Department and our community is Mike has been a vital and key member of the, our crisis intervention, mental health type response to the community, and it's really helped the officers, it's added tools to the toolbox in dealing with multiple type traumas that we have out in the community with mental health and those kind of crises. So with that in mind, I present Mike Mandrum.
Thank you, I appreciate you giving the time for, for us. When the chief first asked me to, to come here, I promised him I would keep this short because I'm known for talking a lot and, and love public appearances, so I'll keep this short, but I just wanted to say that this is truly a reflection on the officers that work for the department. I, I just try to guide them in the right direction, but we have some great men and women in the department, and this is truly a reflection on them. Most importantly though, I wanted to recognize my wife, Megan. She puts up with a lot. I work some crazy hours, so I just wanted to thank her and my family for their support.
Stand up. Stand up, wife.
Quite often, I have to run out the door for some, something rather, or if I'm working during some special event, so I just wanted to thank her and my family for their support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
From the Fire Department, we have our two nominees here tonight. We have firefighter Justin Johnson and Lieutenant Steve Mudrak. We have the problem in the Fire Department of having so many good people that when these guys get picked out, that it's a, it's a hard decision, that's a great problem to have. Just so you know, some of the things for the Exchange Club criteria they're based on is, you know, job performance, leadership, mentoring others, as well as community involvement. And both of these guys are great examples of that. They, they are guys what, they are examples of what the other firefighters and fire officers should aspire to. You know, I know they don't like stuff like this, they're not about recognition, but they, they do the job on a daily basis, and they do it to the best of their ability, and they represent the city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Fire Department to the highest level. So Justin Johnson is our firefighter of the year, and Lieutenant Steve Mudrak is our officer of the year.
Come on up, Jen.
Pretty sure that said, no speeches. It's pretty simple for us. It's a, I love my job, I love working for the city. Anything that we get, any notoriety for is, is simply a matter of doing the job. The extra stuff that we may be able to do is because of just an opportunity. There's always a new opportunity that, that fits your personality, or fits your drive. I got the opportunity to do things that put us into the public photo more, maybe I have to work with some charities, some local charities in the city. It's, it's not a hard sell. It's good for the community, it's good for the boys, it's good for the town, it's a good deal for us.
I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight. Again, like my partner says, our job, job of love, so doesn't make, this kind of stuff is more true for us to sit up here and talk a lot, so just appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
Hold on, gentlemen, we, got to get the photo. Yep. Last meeting, the City Council approve Ratio Architect to lead the update of our comprehensive land use plan, which has been in place since the 1980s, or since the 80s. Leslie Roth, project manager from Ratio Architect, is here tonight and is going to make a few brief remarks. Where's she, there she is. Where's your, your partner? Come on up, too.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you, community residents, for having us here today. I have my colleague Paola Aguirre Serrano also, who will be supporting our team with public engagement. We're really, really excited to be working with this community on the comprehensive plan. As the mayor mentioned, it hasn't been updated for many, many years. And just from the few speeches that we heard today, we know that there's a long history of community involvement, of cultural history, and we're really excited to be a part of the future of Waukegan as we move forward, creating a 10 to 20-year framework plan for this community. One of the things, as we drove around in preparation for our interview about a month or so ago, is we really noticed the pride of people, residents in this community. We noticed that there was a lot of diversity and connectedness that we don't see in a lot of different communities, and we want to just celebrate what's really wonderful about it. We know that there's challenges, we know that there's barriers, and part of our strategy for the comprehensive plan is to really work together as a community to overcome those barriers and create an accessible, inclusive community. With the comprehensive plan, if, if, there are folks here who have not gone through this plan, it's really a long journey. It's going to be about a 13-month plan, where we'll get to know each other very, very well in all different kinds of ways. But the most important part about a comprehensive plan is the impact that it has on each person in this room and each person in the community of Waukegan on a daily basis. It'd be a waste of everyone's time if we got to the end of this process and you didn't feel that the work that we had done would make a difference in your quality of life and that it couldn't be implemented. So this is really an action-oriented plan, we're an action-oriented team, and really plan to work with you on a daily basis to make sure that this plan comes to fruition. So again, thank you very, very much for choosing Ratio and our team here to participate in your future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having me, and as you all know, Noel will be. And as you all know, Noel will be our point person, working with Ratio as we move through this process. Thirteen months, I like that one. It's a little bit shorter than we even anticipated. And I said earlier, Alderman May says, "We," listen, you're gonna get a good Waukegan voice here. But the word, they will not be shy, that I promise you.
Good.
Noel, did you want to say anything?
I just wondered if you could...
Put it to the mic, please.
...ask members of the steering committee who helped select this great team for this exciting...
I'm gonna ask Alderman May, because she was just about every, everyone here. Is everybody here?
I see...
Who do you say?
I see a couple of us are here.
Everybody stand up, stand up. Who was here, part of that steering committee? Thank you, thank you again. Yes, thank you again. Now, I can tell you are part of the steering committee, but that steering committee was about as hard as you can get a makeup of Waukegan. And there was so much put into it, many hours and recommendations, and that's what we're going to expect from, not only from you, but as Alderman May said, and she's probably gonna say it again, they're gonna be deeply involved with this. Because the ownership now is on the steering committee, from the steering committee to you. And I'm just gonna watch back and just say, hey, do it, whatever, man, let's go.
You know you're not gonna be involved.
Yeah, but I'm excited, I'm excited, I'm excited not only for you, I'm excited for us, I'm excited about where we're going. And that excitement needs to transfer to this entire community. So we look forward, it's gonna be a good ride, a good thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, whatever month it is, so I look forward to it.
Great, so do we, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Alderman, do you have anything else you want to say about that? You're good? All right. And again, I want to stress to everybody, please join us for the community input meetings that will be taking place over the next year, year and a half. We look forward to it. All right, those are Mayor's comments. Next, audience time, Madam Clerk. Uh-oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping. Item two, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Mozeo, to approve regular meeting minutes from June 4th, 2018. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Item three, audience time, now, Madam Clerk.
All right, first on the list, you have three minutes, John Sirantakis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Sirantakis from 2411 Rand Avenue, Waukegan. First of all, I'd like to invite everyone, I'm on a committee for the All Eighties Class Reunion for East and West Campus. We're gonna be holding that at the Steiner Pavilion on Friday, June 29th, from 6:00 to 11:00. So we're trying to get ahold of a lot of classmates, and we've gotten ahold of hundreds of them already, but we're having a hard time getting ahold of teachers. I need alumni, not alumni teachers, but teachers that were back in the eighties. So anybody that can help us get the word out...
They're long ago.
Nineteen eighties, yeah. But if you can get that word out, we'd really appreciate it. We're planning on having a big shingding, you could say, down there, but we just want to get together, reminisce, and we're doing something, you know, for the community again. It's our classmates, it's being able to talk. Mayor, I hope we see you over there, too.
When's that gonna be again? When's that gonna be again? Give me the dates again.
June, I'm sorry, Friday, June 29th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the Steiner Pavilion. All right, so if you get the word out for us, we'd appreciate it, and everyone's invited, bring your friends, family, we're hoping to have a great time over there. And last, I just want to announce, for People's Choice, which is my business, thirty-five years, our thirty-fifth annual Customer Appreciation Day. It's free to the public, we do it from 11:00 to 4:00 every year, and we have pony rides, we have hot dogs, everything is free. So everyone's invited, everyone is welcome, so we'd like to see some of our local citizens, you can say, come and visit us.
On the 29th, what's the time again?
Six to 11:00 on Friday, June 29th, is the All Eighties Class Reunion. And then on Saturday, June 30th, 11:00 to 4:00 is People's Choice Customer Appreciation Day, so it's our thirty-fifth annual. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gerald Jones?
Now, real quick, you can't wear no east or west clothing.
We want people to dress up.
Oh, you want us to put an east campus?
Or an eighties wear.
Ladies.
Eighties wear?
Yeah, things that you're wearing.
Oh.
I think I...
I still have my own football jersey, I'm just telling you right now.
I think I have a number of the Japanese...
Ladies, eighties hair, too.
How'd you get that jersey?
Mr. Jones?
Well, you all know my name, you just said Gerald Jones. You saw me walk up here, but I've been living in Waukegan for the past twenty-one years. I've been in Lake County for sixty-three years, and I see a lot of city vehicles, and I guess these people drive these cars, work for the city of Waukegan or what have you, but they park on the street. And I was thinking, I thought that a person that drives a city vehicle should park in their own yard. I always have my front yard occupied by a city vehicle every day. That's the concern I have. So it would seem like to me, you know, if they didn't want to park their vehicles on the street, they would drive their own personal vehicle to their job, and then get into their city government vehicle and do their job, and get in their vehicle and drive back home.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Lynn Florian?
Good evening, I'm Lynn Florian, I'm a lifetime citizen of Waukegan, born and raised here, product of the Waukegan schools, nineteen eighties. I wanted to thank the Council for the meeting two weeks ago when you agreed to partner with Lake County Coalition for the Homeless. I think that's an excellent thing for the city of Waukegan. I was involved years ago when PADS was first started in Waukegan, and I think we need to address the homeless issue from a compassionate standpoint, compassionate point of view, and I commend you for partnering with them, and for Alderman May for bringing that to the attention of the whole group. I also would like to congratulate you for coming up with a long-term plan. I think that's another thing the city of Waukegan has long been needing, and I look forward to some good things coming out of that. The main thing I wanted to talk about, though, was the resolution that you passed regarding the Foxconn plant that's being built in Wisconsin. And while I'm under no false pretenses that the people of Wisconsin are gonna care anymore about the citizens of Illinois than they do about Wisconsin, I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about these fine particulate matters. They're very, very small, they're one, they're less than a hundred nanometers, and one nanometer is one billionth of a meter, so a meter's this big, so imagine one billionth of this is what they're talking about. These particles are so small, and there's a reason why the EPA has put a limit on them. And Wisconsin has been allowed to just bypass all the rules and put this plant in, and that air is gonna come right down to Waukegan. And in 2013, which was the most recent data I could get, this area had seventy-eight good days air quality, twenty-one moderate days, only point five unhealthy days for sensitive people, and zero days for everyone unhealthy. So we've done a good job of cleaning up our air over the years, I'm assuming it's been better since 2013, I wish I could get more recent data, but I would encourage you to do anything you can to keep this matter in front of the people of Wisconsin and actually the whole country. Why should they be allowed to bypass these rules? They were put there for a reason. These are unhealthy particles for everyone to breathe, there's no doubt about it. You can't deny it like you can climate change, you just can't. So I encourage you to keep this issue, along with the county board, in front of everyone and try to do as much as you can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I think I have four on this one. Margaret Carrasco, Lupita Munoz, Galileo Munoz, and Natalie Flores.
Three, so three minutes apiece.
No, you're all together, right, Margaret? Three minutes for the four of you?
Uh, no. It's not gonna be, it's three each one.
Pardon me?
I can get a three, but we may not, okay.
Okay.
It's only because I have to translate this.
Okay, I'm gonna start.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Grandson. Many of you know my son, John, and the lake, and I just want to say thank you to the Police Department and everyone to help me to find my son and bring him back. Mary, for coming to the funeral, too. And there's no words to say thank you for everything you have done for my family and for helping us and giving us all the support. It's, I thought I was able to win it, but it's really hard right now. I cannot, I cannot explain or say more words than thank you because without the police and divers and the Fire Department, I wouldn't have my son back. I'm just, I'm just wanna say thank you for everything and for being there. Thank you.
Okay, I will make this really brief, okay? Okay, so good evening, my name is Galia Mendoza, I am a student at Loyola University sitting in Communications, and a proud former student from Waukegan Public Schools. I'm here on behalf of the events Latinos por Waukegan Asociación. The Fiesta Patrias events that take place here in Waukegan are very important to Waukegan and its history, and since they have been a tradition for many years, here in Waukegan, Illinois, as you know, there is plenty of diversity, and it's important for us to be able to express our culture through these events. And I would like to thank you, Mayor, for your overall support and appearance at the event that took place this June 8th and 9th. I want to thank you for that very much. And with that being said, it would be an honor to have you, our mayor, join us in our all future events that take place this September. I hope that we could count with your support, and I would like to thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Nandoi Flores, I'm seventeen years old, and I'm one of the candidates that will be representing Waukegan. And I invite everyone, all the girls around seventeen to twenty-three years old, to be involved in this event.
Okay, good evening. I'm here with some of my committee members, actually, everyone here, and there's much more. We really, really would like for the mayor and all the Alderman to join us that day on Sunday, August 9th, at Waukegan's Beach, because we will transform our Waukegan beach and Steiner Pavilion into the most beautiful, elegant event site in the whole North Shore. There will also be a former banquet and gala. We promise you that everyone in attendance will be left speechless. Plus, we also want to invite all the Queens in Lake County, yes, there are gonna be so many people outside of Waukegan dying to come to Waukegan for this event, I assure you, and it's gonna be RSVP. We want to invite, we're inviting all the Queens in Lake County, from all the towns, all races, all nationalities, to join us as our honorary guests. The prize this year for the Queen will be an all-expense-paid trip to Las Vegas. I brought a sampling of what we want to transform it to, it's, I don't know, I guess people are just gonna love it. The only problem I foresee is so many people wanting to attend, and we're not gonna have enough room. Thank you very much.
What was the date again, Margaret?
The, I'll have personal invitations for you, sorry, our printer...
That's okay.
A little behind, but it's Sunday, August 9th.
What time?
That's my Queen pageant.
What time is it?
2:00 PM. Yeah, early. We have, we will have thirty contestants. So Larry, we need you there to be a judge, okay? Thank you very much, thank you. Maya Garcia?
Oh, he's...
Oh, you, okay. Jose Giles? Your turn? All right. Dan Trainoff?
Dan. Hi, my name is Dan Trainoff, I live in Waukegan. I just wrote this about a half hour ago, so please excuse any typos and mistakes that are in there. Last January, the City Council voted unanimously to modify the water and sewer ordinance. One of those modifications was to change from quarterly billing to monthly billing. I wanted to find out more about this change, so I went to the city website for answers. There, under noticeable change, there under the noticeable changes heading, I read the following. The amount of the billing, in essence, will be divided by three. If your bill averages ninety dollars every three months, then the monthly bill will be around thirty dollars every month. Makes sense. Three months divided by monthly billing would equal one-third the amount. So according to that, it implies that there's no changes in the amount that we're gonna pay for our water bill. Well, that's wrong. And that part on the website was recently deleted, and I wonder why it was removed, and luckily I saved it. And then went back to the ordinance itself for answers and did some calculations based on the changes. It turns out there will be increases to many Waukegan citizens' water and sewer bills, which are probably cheaters. My annual costs will more than double. There is and was a minimum billing amount under the old and new plans. If a person uses one gallon of water, they will be billed this monthly minimum amount. And that amount has changed. I see three classes of increase due to the new monthly billing charges. One group, those who used more than the minimum threshold under the quarterly billing plan and will not use more than the minimum threshold under the new monthly plan, will see no increase due to the changes in the billing cycle. The next group, those who used more than the minimum threshold amount under the quarterly billing plan but will use less under the monthly plan, will see some increases. The last group are those who use less than the minimum threshold under the quarterly plan and will use less under the new monthly plan. This will apply to many senior citizens, those who live alone, and those who conserve water. I fall into this group myself, and my bill over the course of year will more than double. Now, we have a proposal to grant...
Thank you, Mr. Trainoff.
Y'all have your words.
I'd like him, for my information, I'd like to hear him continue. I would like to see him continue, if I may make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Tempest.
I need about two minutes.
To finish up, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pass it, carry it.
Now we have a proposal to grant a rebate to those who qualify for a senior property tax raise. If that's approved tonight without modification, then many citizens will see substantial increases in their water and sewer bills. The only groups that will be exempt from any increase due to these changes will be those who use a lot of water and those who qualify for the senior property tax raise. The rest will pay more. It's unfair, and it all seems to have been poorly planned. It's unfair and it all seems to have been poorly planned. Was this the intention of the aldermen and alderwomen when they voted to pass these changes back in January? Were you all informed about this before you voted? The first sentence of that notice on the website, the amount of the billing, in essence, will be divided by three, leads me to conclude one of two things. That it was intentionally deceptive or that whoever crafted that sentence didn't know that the changes would in, cause the increases that I've mentioned. The fact that it was recently removed smells a little funny. I suggest that those who will see these unfair increases on their water bills, contact their alderpersons and make sure that they know that you don't like what they did. And I also suggest that you all, uh, consider, uh, amending these changes to make them more fair. Cause, uh, people, certain, certain class of people are being penalized. People who use a lot of water are gonna pay about the same. But people who use, who conserve water are going to be paying, in my case, more than double. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Victor Flores. Victor Flores. Victor Flores.
No, I was still present. Yeah, it was all together.
Okay. Ralph Peterson, Jr.
Yeah, Mayor Cunningham, um, my thoughts tonight are that you're pretty much on the same pathway with Donald Trump. And I'm not asking anymore in reference to the Sheridan Road Plan. I'm not gonna ask you to put that back on the drawing board. But what I will tell you is that over this Father's Day weekend, we obtained over three hundred signatures. And you're pretty much forcing my hand in this petition. It's in reference to those in the First War wants to see that plan put back on the drawing board. It doesn't have to be this way, but it will be this way if that plan's not put back on the drawing board. I'd rather do other things with my Mondays than come up here and go at you. I have better things to do. And I don't know if you're surrounded by people that's telling you the truth, but I speak to many people and the white community is mad as hell because they feel you've raised taxes across the board after convincing them that you wouldn't, it would be her. So you're not really looking really good and I'm trying to be fair because I, I'm excited over having a black mayor too, believe it or not, even though I didn't vote for you. No, no, that's not to be funny, I'm so totally serious here. But there's some things you're gonna have to go about differently. Also, you made many promises in the Hispanic community. As it stand, many were not kept. The next issue, the next issue that I have is that, um, John Idleberg, it was a big deal for you to be Waukegan's first black mayor. Now, we have an opportunity to have Lake County's first black sheriff. I'm not gonna say you are because I haven't had it come out of your mouth, but I've heard it said from many that you're supporting a Republican, now sitting sheriff, current. And that just throws the, everybody, that's not just a black complaint right there. Everybody is kinda shaking their head about that. They would like to see you have that same zeal, cause the guy is overqualified. I don't know if you and I'm not campaigning for him, but I'll just stick with, you were very excited about being the first black. Let's not stop at you, let's keep it rolling, cause the guy is definitely qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes audience time.
All right, item four. Uh, motion by, uh, a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to present resolution to rename Fourteenth Street Audrey Nixon Boulevard. Are there any questions to the motion? And just to be clear, this is in conjunction with the City of North Chicago. They're, uh, changing the name on Fourteenth, on Fourteenth Street on the south side and we're changing the name on the north side. So, uh, we're doing it in conjunction with them. All, there's a motion on the floor, second, uh, there's a question to the motion, Alderman Villalobos.
Yeah, actually, that was gonna be my question, uh, whether we are working or not.
Yes.
So, and also just for clarity, uh, sake, so, um, Fourteenth Street runs from Sheridan Road to
Green Bay.
Green Bay. And so that west of Green Bay is gonna be Casper, Palaski.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it is now, from what I understand.
Okay. I just, cause again, people are gonna get a little confused as we transition this name of the road.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's just, it's gonna stop at Green Bay Road, Palaski will not, yet it's still have, I think they're still, they're signing up there.
State, state.
Yeah, just that, it will be just the North Chicago-Waukegan border.
Right, and then also for clarity, for the residents, uh, the portion of Fourteenth Street that is Waukegan, uh, uh, City of Waukegan is from Commonwealth, I believe, to Doug Dell. So that's a stretch and then the, uh, east and west of that section is North Chicago. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, uh, first and second, and any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
All right, the motion's passed and carried. Uh, item B, uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Seager, a proclamation, uh, Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day or Freedom Day honoring the end of slavery in the United States. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Guys, have it and obviously, we, we gave the proclamation this, uh, this past weekend, presented it at the, uh, Juneteenth celebration, which was held at Bull Park. No, sir.
Cause what's the date of, of the others' proclamation? I'm sorry, I don't know, what's the date?
I, I don't have the date in front of me, but it was
Cause the actual Juneteenth day is June nineteenth.
Okay. But I, I don't have the date, we were celebrating the celebration here, not the actual day, so.
Proclamation that you were doing on the eighth.
Okay. It was June nineteenth.
June nineteenth.
Okay. June nineteenth. All right. All right, that being said, reports and communication, monthly treasure report, uh, motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Newsom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the first item is a motion to approve a resolution clarifying the appointed terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Now, am I microphone on, I'm sorry about that. Um, but you know, and we, we did pass this during committee, uh, do you wanna get it on the floor and then I, I'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, motion Alderman May, second by Alderman, uh, Bolton. Question to the motion, Alderman May.
I do, I did, when we, we did pass it in committee, but I've, I've been looking at the, I obviously don't have, um, committed to memory and don't have time to look up all our minutes when the current board was seated. But I do know that we recently seated the final three names on the resolution, Mr. Grimes, Santiago and Mr. Turner. So if they're four, the, the resolution was always four years. It says four years and our red line item says four years. And yet, these people only serve three years. Do you see what I'm saying? But the resolution said, always said four years. First, there was a, a mistake on the website that said three years, but our actual ordinance, and if you look at the red line that we have in our hands, we crossed out four years and then we saved four years, so it was always four years. So I guess my question is, why would these three, and I didn't, I don't have time to look up when everyone else started, but when they were approved, the ordinance said four years. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to be a, well.
The timeline, Rob.
Wouldn't actually
I wonder if we should, can we, should we hold it and try it again, uh, to, to ascertain, or was this done intentionally? I'm just, I just don't understand.
It wasn't done intentionally, to, to try to limit, it was done, the attention was simply to get everybody on a proper rotating schedule.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is if it's a four-year term, wouldn't they expire in twenty twenty-one? Cause they served most of eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, and well, that's exactly the problem, that the idea was to have the replacement people serve up the balance of their charge. Instead, they were appointed to whole new terms that began on their particular
Oh, those were all
Yeah. Yeah, they were, uh, these evolved over the years, this has happened for many, many years.
So we're trying to come, impose a different form of order.
Okay, well, cause like Mr. Grimes, that, well, Mr. Die was told that his term was up, even though it was only three years. So I guess there's just some confusion. You know what I mean, he, his, he was told his term was up after three years, I know that's not your fault, when, I, I didn't go through all the minutes. So I guess, I, I guess you're, you're answering my question, um, corporation counsel. It just didn't make sense to me since they were just recently appointed. And so we'll have a complete turnover before twenty twenty-one.
Correct. I mean, this is right.
And then moving forward. Right, I, I, I understand that. Okay.
Just catch.
So they, they're gonna stay three years?
No, it's, it, it was four years in the ordinance and it is four years still in the amended ordinance, but the city website needs to be corrected, cause it says three years.
And the resolution says.
The resolution says three?
Yes.
No, the, the resolution doesn't say how many years, but the amended ordinance does say four years.
It says with three appointment, appointed in one year, three in, oh, three in the second year, three in the third year, okay.
Okay. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse.
Okay.
This is, clarity is good.
Okay, so.
Real good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
The motion's passed and carried.
The next item is an ord, uh, um, a motion to approve an ordinance amending the term and composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission to clarify the structure of terms and to allow for a vice chair. Uh, Mayor, during the committee meeting, there was, uh, an amendment proposed that the chairman is appointed on an annual basis by the mayor and the committee did approve that amendment, for your information, rather than, cause it wasn't clear whether they've served for their full three years. So the committee thought that it would be a good idea if the mayor either appoints or reappoints every year the chairman.
Let me see.
Okay, that was Alderman Villalobos' suggestion. I assume move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to approve a resolution permitting the lease of city property to Gen G's on the Waukegan beach in exchange for a rent of an undisclosed amount per month. Um, in committee, we had a lengthy discussion and the, there was only a three-person committee this evening. And based on our discussion, we determined that the amount of the rent for this year, or the amount of the monthly fee would be, um, zero. And I assume move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozio. Any other questions to the motion?
Um, I don't have a question, but just a comment that was, I made during committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for next year, I think we should definitely go for, uh, request for proposals for this process, but as a stopgap measure right now to move this forward, cause I think concessions are, would greatly enhance uh, beachgoers' experience at our beach and improve it. Um, that's, we'll move forward with this, but again, uh, for next year. And also, um, secondarily, um, it'd be beneficial for us to have a, uh, end of the season debriefing meeting with Gen G's and other people at the table to talk about how to move this forward more effectively for next year.
I, 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 we certainly agree with you on that. We ran into a situation, kinda last minute, Janet, myself, fuck a lot of staff time, but you're right on point. That was our intention anyway, but we just wanted to get through this. Um, as other things that are coming up, but, uh, thank you, we're all on the same page. I agree. Any other, any other questions, Alderman May?
Thank you. So there was a pretty lengthy discussion in judiciary committee regarding this item. Um, one of the, one of the pieces of this contract is to allow, um, vending machines at Waukegan beach. And so I raised some serious concerns regarding, uh, vending machines at Waukegan beach, cause we've been down that road before. Um, we recently put up signs for the Lake Michigan Water Trail and then they lasted all of two days before someone pulled them out and threw them in the lake. Um, people need to learn how to behave better at city properties in this city. So I have concerns about, um, damage to the machines. The city has no liability to these machines, let's make that clear. The owner of, uh, Gen G's, the owners are taking full responsibility for their machines and any damage and graffiti that may happen to them. But I, 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 I approached this with very, uh, with some trepidation, um, I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned. As far as the contract, I, I just wanna echo Alderman Villalobos' comments that, you know, we really need to visit vendor licenses at the city to make sure that it's a fair process and it doesn't appear to be some kind of sweetheart contract that we're handing out to preferred vendors. You know, we just wanna make sure that the, everyone in the city is getting the fair shot, um, to participate in the increased activity at the lake.
And I certainly agree with, with that, um, this is kinda going back to your point. We haven't done this in a long time. We're starting to see a lot more activity down there with people, so we just trying to figure it, how, kinda, how, how's it gonna work out? And more importantly, not on the city's dime, and I'm glad you pointed that out. Uh, the machines are not owned by the city, there's no liability for the city. Uh, so the, the individuals who, uh, who's taken up the risk, you know, it it's a risk for them, but I think it's a good step going in that direction. And as we said, next year, uh, we have a better handle and I really love the fact that end of year briefing, that's gonna be critical as to what worked, what didn't work, how can work better in the future. Alderman May, is that it?
Yes.
Alderman Mozio?
I don't wanna go on too long, I've said this a hundred times before, I missed a committee meeting for a reason, but storage containers. My idea of storage containers. Go buy ten storage containers from somebody, put them down there and let anybody in the world rent them for whatever we decide to rent them. I don't care if you sell tacos, hot dogs, skateboards, kites, I don't care. But that, instead of trying to build a structure or whatever we wanna do, if we have people down there, I was down there Sunday, packed again, but we, we've been talking about this and, I mean, maybe somebody's got a better idea. Storage containers, you can't vandalize one of them and you damn sure ain't gonna steal one of them unless you got a flat bed and a crane, you know, and they're not expensive. Let somebody, here's storage containers, decorate it, paint it, heck, I don't care what you wanna put in, in the thing. And, and, you know, and, and, and get, get that rolling for next year, there you go. That's easy. That's easy, it's in my, my mind, maybe I'm over
No, 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 Alderman Mozio, I, I mean, we
And I know the situation came up, it sort of hit us, we're just trying to get things going, to try to keep things, you know, smooth for the summer. I get all that and I'm not, you know, dissing anything that's going on now by any means. Uh, but in the future, going forward, that, we, that's my idea, we gotta get some things down there, we need some, and storage containers are the perfect thing.
Duly noted, and, and I, I will say there's the, the pickup and, uh, folks coming to the Waukegan beach. Uh, I, it was, it, it's been somewhat overwhelming. But what is very clear is we need to have something at the beach. More than just our beach and grass, we just need it.
I, I keep, and Alderman May's probably heard this, she's probably sick of me talking about it, but that damn four block or whatever it is in Rosemont, it's between a highway for crying out loud. And it's got four or five venues, it's got like a park in the middle, like, like, even with, they even got a sponsor, MB Financial Park. And that place has got people there all the time and it doesn't even have a beach, you're looking at a highway. You know?
I, 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 I hear you.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm, we just, I, I And I'm not, I'm not, I'm, we just, I wish we could try to get something going like that.
Well, I tell you what, I tell you one thing we have, we have done, all of us. We're taking some baby steps, constantly baby steps. This is another one of those baby steps. But I really believe that we're moving, we're going north. We're not going south, we're going north. And as, uh, moving too fast, as we've seen in the past, has not always worked out well for us.
I, I agree.
So this, this, here's another baby step. And there's going to be someone in the middle of the summer that's going to say, Mayor, we should try this. And I'm, I want to try. I, I, I'm into, I'm into the trying thing right now. But our, we've done some great things out at the beach. We, we've been able to, you know, reinvent the Waukegan Beach as we, when I say we, more particularly, well, everybody up here, as we've known it in the past. And there is an idea, you know, in my head that I'm, I'm trying to get out. And every move that we make there is, is moving it forward. And, and it's tough to watch, it's very tough to watch, I know. But I think going slow and easy is better going fast and not.
I get it.
Meeting the expectations that we want to meet.
And I, and I, and I understand all the legal ramifications of our land, we own it and it's all this and that and illegally we get involved and, oh, you can't do this, you can't, I get all that. No offense, Counselor, but I, I get all that. So, but let's get moving.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Heard you loud and clear. Both ends of the spectrum. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Okay, the last item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the beach parking ordinance. And what we're doing is we are reducing the entry fee for non-residents from $20 to $10. And there will no longer be a, um, limit on the amount of non-resident permits we issue per day. And I so move.
Uh, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. And I do want to say, uh, this before, I'm going to say this. One of the reasons we did this, and Alderman Mozio, I think it was your suggestion when we did it, the $20, is because we had very limited parking down at that beach for Waukegan residents. Now, since, uh, since we've taken ownership of the OBRP property, um, we have a lot of parking spaces.
Parking's not an issue.
Parking's not an issue anymore. And, uh, it, it was just so difficult for Lieutenant Beach and his team. And I'm saying Lieutenant Beach, not because the chief is not here, because he was the one taking, fielding all the, all the questions and getting all the grief for it. And this is one of the compromises, hey, open it up. And I think this is going to be one of the best moves, Alderman Mozio and Alderman May, as to bringing in those vendors and having, this is going to be an awesome move for us. So kudos to Lieutenant Beach and his recommendation. And Alderman Villalobos, that came from like a year, almost a year and a half of observing and now coming back with a good strategic plan that meets Corporate Counsel's approval. And so we can move forward. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy for him, I'm happy for us, but more importantly, I'm happy for those who are looking to, uh, really come down to Waukegan Beach. We still will have an officer there, let's be clear. Mind your Ps and Qs. But, uh, this is a, this is an awesome move for us. All right, any, any other questions? Alderman Villalobos.
Uh, more of a comment or a suggestion. Kind of just thinking this through and bringing us to the 21st century. I know traditionally we've been using like cash boxes for the monetary amount of money that we give from the non-residents. But as we move forward with this, we might want to consider electronic like debit card usage, things like that because it's easy enough to have a tablet, that swipe card thing. So again, a lot of people don't carry cash at times. We can move there. We'll take our time to get there, but I think that's one of the locations that we need to be to go forward with this. Yeah, it's a lot for both, so. And you might already have thought about the Lieutenant Beach, so, yeah, it looks like you have.
You talked to Tina about that, but look at this level.
But we can do the due diligence on that and just see the feasibility. Thank you.
All righty. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Ayes have. Great job Judiciary Committee, awesome, we did some great things tonight. Finance Committee. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to direct Corporation Counsel to draft a resolution establishing a water and sewer fee rebate program for minimum usage customers who receive the senior citizen's assessment freeze on their property tax bill. And I so move. I would like to speak a little bit about this. And if Tina could come up, I'd appreciate it. This was brought to my.
Uh, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. Uh, motions on the floor, and Alderman Newsom.
Brought to my attention by a constituent of mine. And I spoke with, uh, Ms. Tina about it. Previously, there was a flat fee for anyone that used less than 4,000 gallons. And that fee was $22 and I believe 67 cents for a quarter. Uh, when we passed the new ordinance, we did away with the 30 gallons or the 4,000 gallons and made it 3,000 gallons. So anyone that used less than the 4,000 gallons, my constituent in particular, their quarterly bill was 27 times three, 20-some dollars per quarter. So dividing that by three, his, well, 22, well, his bill was $7 and something per quarter. Uh, we have to keep in mind too that May 1st, the council voted in in December to increase the water rates. May 1st was 6%.
Correct.
Next year will be 5%. And next year will be 4%, 3% till we're down to 2%. So you have to calculate, there's an increase starting May 1st anyway. So to address this, a senior citizen that uses less than 3,000 gallons per month, well, my particular constituent was using about 1,000 gallons per month, paying $7 per month, and his bill, the flat fee now, is $14.
Double.
So his bill doubled. So in order to address that, with the, he didn't have a problem paying the increase, which everyone's water rate bill went up 6% starting May 1st. To address his doubling in a month, almost more than what he would pay in a quarter, we were, um, wanted to do a resolution to offer, um, senior citizens freeze or a rebate on anyone that has the senior citizens freeze and the, um, what was the other one?
For, for property tax.
Property tax.
If you have the, um, the senior citizen assessment freeze, it means that you're, it's on your primary residence, so you have to have a homestead. That has to be your primary residence. It has to be, I believe it's over 65, I haven't looked at the criteria in a while. And there's an income limit as well. I'm not sure what that is, I think it's around 68,000 or 58,000 last time I checked. So the county goes through the process of the assessor's office of confirming that it's the primary residence, that they're a senior citizen and that they meet the income criteria. So that would be, the city could then use the property tax bill itself as verification for age, income, and homeownership.
And this person would have to live in their resident in order to receive it. So that's why this, um, resolution is on the table right now. Now, if this council wants to include another group in there, but for a person that lives alone on a fixed income, I can understand where he was coming from, where his bill doubled in a month.
Yeah.
What he was paying in three, in three months. I thought that was something that we should take a look at.
Any other questions to the motion?
Uh, Mayor?
Alderman May.
Thank you. I guess I'm just, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with the, not, I don't have, I don't have anything against helping a senior citizen on a fixed income, let's just be clear there. But maybe we have people who aren't senior citizens who are also on fixed income, whether it's social security, it could be disability, there could be all kinds of situations where the people, it's not just because they're old or they're conservatives of water. They have a water barrel in their yard and they, you know, I, they may be doing things for, for environmental purposes to use less water. So I guess I just, and I, and I, and I'm thinking in my head and it would, I don't know how you figure this out other than changing the minimum, you know, that we, that we approved. But I, I also, I, I, it feels like there's an inequity if we only, you know. This is just a motion to direct Corporation Counsel to draft. To draft, mhm. So resolution isn't being adopted. Right, okay, understood. I don't want anyone to go through the work, you know, like without having the input. If there's a way that we can, I, I don't know, if there's, if there's a way not to single out other people that may not be senior citizens, I just, I just wonder if there's a way to think about that. So that's my comment. From a staff perspective, it would be very helpful if there is a third-party way to verify if, for example, we want primary residents only. You know, there are, um, a lot of minimum billing usage in our vacant apartment units within a larger building. So I'm not sure if that's something that the city council wants to provide a rebate for or if you do want to target it for home, owner occupied. But it would be helpful from a staff perspective if it is a third-party verification such as you have homestead exemption with the county or a senior exemption or a veteran's exemption, exemption already with the county. I hear what you're saying. Just from a processing standpoint, um, that would be quite helpful. But I'm sure that Corporation Counsel's office and the Finance Department, we can take, you know, input from the Alderman over the next couple of weeks and, you know, come back with some options. I appreciate that.
Alderman May, Alderman Mozio.
I concur with both Alderman May and, and Mr. Boguski's evaluation of that. I mean, we don't just want to have seniors, we may have other people, you know. But we have to verify because we all know people, they'll, they'll try to pull the wool over our eyes, you know?
Well, I, I.
And, but so, and, and, and she brings a good point up, we have to have some type of verification. We have, there might be a veteran, there might be disability, you know? But then you're going to have all these other property owners who are going to try to scam the system. We know that. So, uh, is it, we have to try to make it so it's not so untenable to try to figure it out who's really being honest with, with us. But I, I agree with both of, you brought up a good point, the third party, the county with all their exemption. And Alderman May's about, it's not just seniors who, you know, may, 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 God knows the Mozo family provided them water revenue for the city.
There's, um, two programs we could consider looking at. The Village of Gurnee, residents do pay for garbage collection directly to a provider in the Village of Gurnee, but they do have a senior rebate that they do for the garbage. And they do use this method, they use the senior exemption. And it's an income threshold, senior threshold, and you have to have primary residents. The Village of Grace Lake has a water conservation rebate that they do. So if you bought a rain barrel, um, you have to bring in your Home Depot or Menards receipt and show that it's a rain barrel on a, on a certain list. We do however, have 21,000 water accounts unlike these smaller ones that have.
Right.
So again, um, we're happy to implement any program that the council gives us direction to do so, but we would ask that it be a manageable program so that if we do do rebates, they can be accurate and timely.
The only thing that I would, would, the first thing that would strike my mind is there would be an income, income threshold. But how on gosh would you even get that? I mean, you have everybody's tax return, I mean, how would you get to the income?
We're earned a lot to, to even access that.
Right, I wouldn't think so, but I'm, that's what I'm saying. How would, how do you get?
Well, the county.
That's basically what we're talking about, we're talking about.
The, this particular assessment, the freeze is income-based as well as age and residence.
Okay. Well, we got some flushing out to do, I guess is the best thing to do.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we, we chose the, the county method and put the senior because it's already there. We can see it.
Right.
We can identify it. And the unfortunate part is any, any other way, it's just going to be very, very difficult. It, it, actually, let's be honest, it's going to be impossible.
Right.
With 21,000 accounts. I think we have a method right here. We should, uh, look at other methods as we move forward with our process. But right now, let's address this particular issue here. And if we can, and it could be on a case-by-case, it could be a conservation. But right now, what's in front of us is this senior citizens method using what is already in place. That's, that, that is where I think we need to go as you and I speak today. And as we've done with other ordinances, we've come back at the two or three months of looking at them, evaluating them, getting some more information on the best practices. While other communities can implement these, they, they, they just don't have the massive of accounts. Because what's going to happen next, we're going to have, have to outsource this in processing these different bills. And that's where we want to, just, we want to be very careful about it. But I think for today, let's move forward with the senior, with the senior method and look for methods, uh, in the future, uh, maybe over the next two or three months and, and find out if there's something there that we can, some ideas that we have from you, you hear from other communities. And obviously Tina is, you know, she, I have, will ask her to go out on that little website that she's on all the time to say there's something we can do, you know, to address those who, um, are limited in financial. Uh, that's, and, and not trying to punish anyone, just really trying to be as fair as possible what we have with the tools that we have in front of us. Thank you for your input though, and I was with Dan Trainor, thank you. Haven't seen you in a long time, Dan.
Can I say something really great?
Well, I, I.
I'm not there, but the origin of the problem is because the new threshold was not one-third of the old threshold. If you, if you did that now, it would probably solve everything.
Okay, and, and again, Dan, let us, and, and everybody real clear, nobody don't comment to the floor like this. But Dan Trainor, you know, you got that old school in you. We will, um, we're going to take a look at it, let us take a look at it, Dan. Great comments. You brought some, brought some information to us, let us take a look and do some vetting and we'll come back with, I mean, we're very good at that. All right? So the item in front of us right now is to direct Corporation Counsel to draft a resolution establishing water and sewer fee rebate program for minimum usage customers who receive the senior citizen's assessment freeze on their property tax bill. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item B, motion to approve 2018 Tourism Community Marketing Partnership invoice from Visit, Visit Lake County in the amount of $30,187.50. Budget code 100106024443. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item C, motion authorizing the Information Technology Director to renew the Microsoft Software Maintenance Contract for a three-year period starting May 1st, 2018 with Computer Discount Warehouse Government CDW-G under the Illinois State Contract, Software Contract CMS 64, excuse me, CMS 6945110. The total renewal contract cost is $319,000, $319,277.40 billed in three installments of $106,425.68 annually on May 31st of each year charged to various budget codes. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seeger. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item D, motion to approve fiscal year 2018. Item D, motion to approve fiscal year 2018-2019 Citywide Office Supplies and Paper Purchasing Contract from Office Plus Solutions and Supply of Waukegan, Illinois under the Cooperative Purchasing Network, TCPN, pricing for an amount not to exceed $40,000, charged to various budget codes, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item E, motion to approve a resolution clarifying authorization for certain expenses from the Fire Training Fund. The fund was established by Resolution 16-R-20, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion passed in care, Insurance Committee.
Me.
Alderman Newsom.
Item A, motion approving the policy in brokered terms and fees for the July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, property workers' compensation and casualty insurance program for a total estimate amount of $1,207,022. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion passed in care, Legre Lashin, Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to move to the top to present ordinance 18-0, ordinance challenge for new ethnic codes of the city of Waukegan.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Mozyo, any questions to the motion? Just real quick, where, Legre, Legre Lashin. Corporation Council, kind of explain this a little bit for the audience, please.
Sure, and, back in 1974, the city adopted an ordinance, an ordinance which was our ethics code. Fortunately, since 1974, the city has not amended that ordinance code despite the passage of, shall we say, a long period of time. This code, while it was good when it was adopted, was very short, quite succinct, and didn't really do much. It is, however, in the interim years, 35 of them, that the state of Illinois has adopted a lot of changes. There have been a whole lot of things that have been altered since this was, the original code, incidentally, was adopted right after Watergate, that'll give you an idea of how it's been. There had been a lot of push to have greater transparency, fairness, openness, and responsiveness of government, and that's what this is intended to do. Primarily, this says that people that are elected officials, appointed officials, work for the city, they're all bound by the code, by a code of ethics. It says, we're supposed to treat the public fairly and treat the public's money with respect. And that's what this does, you're not supposed to have private deals that are just to your own benefit. There are some rules in here that explain how people can effectively work within the city government, but they're not supposed to hold secret deals, you know, to help their brother, or their sister, or their aunt, or uncle, of that nature, and certainly not partnerships and deals that they got cooked for themselves. So what this does is it takes city, it takes the existing state code and codifies it and turns it into something that is locally enforceable. And the, and every municipality, in my opinion, should have one of these, and it's time we got this on.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Public works.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion, item A, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to enter to, a intergovernmental agreement between the city of Waukegan and Swelko in regards to clothing, recycling, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to award the 2017 CDBG Sidewalk Program to Dland Construction LLC of Algonquin, Illinois, for a not-to-exceed amount of $99,500. Funds for this project will be charged to CDB, CDBG funds in the line item 245550427636, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Seager, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to approve the quote from Caponella and Sons and Corporate for emergency repairs and replacement of sanitary storm sewer in the 400 block of Popular Street for an amount not to exceed $22,120 per section 2-458 subsection I-2. Funds will be charged to line item 555916027085, and I so move.
Yeah, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item D, motion to approve a professional services contract with Baxter, Baxter and Woodman to provide for an interim water plant operator at a rate not to exceed $110. Funding from line item 555915524436, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mozyo, any questions to the motion?
Yes, yes. Sure do. A hundred, a hundred and ten dollars, a rate not to exceed a hundred and ten dollars, is that per hour?
Yes, per hour, sir.
Yeah, how many hours is it figuring a day for a plant operator? Are we talking about a 24-hour day, are we talking about eight hours, Jim?
Part-time.
Twenty-four hours a week.
A week.
What, huh?
Twenty-four hours a week.
Part-time.
Twenty-four hours a week, part-time. So you just do it on a part-time, it's going to give us 24 hours of time per week to manage it on an interim basis.
That's what the, that's what the proposal is, barring, barring some other contingency that requires additional assistance.
And what does it, what does it come per hour?
Hundred and ten dollars an hour.
Hundred and ten.
That's, that's, okay, well, we're stuck, aren't we?
Yeah, it's not...
We are stuck.
Well, that's, well, let's hurry up and get one.
Well, and, and I'm glad you said that, I'm glad you said that, Alderman. As you all know, we, Brian Anderson, who was our superintendent of the water plant, had resigned to take another offer to a city to the south of us, Evanston. We did promote it up, a long-term employee, very well to run the plant. Mr. Mark McGuire, who then retired in June 15. In the way the water plant is to be operated, you must have a Class A operator on file with the IEPA all times to sign off on everything. And that left us in a pretty tough spot. We then went out to solicit for those to come in to be our superintendent. The unfortunate part is, we received about seven, about seven, most of them from out of town, and all of them asking for more than what our salary ordinance currently sets. As opposed to us rushing to bring someone in just to fill the void, we went into what we called Plan B. And Plan B was bringing, asking Baxter Woodman to come in, who is very familiar with our plant, who knows our plant, who's done some work in our plant over the last four or five years, is that correct, Ms. Twika? Yes, all right. So we're asking them to come in, while we're going an extensive search countrywide, we're going countrywide. I think we're trying to get roughly 54, 54, 54 names that we can really sit down and take our time with bringing in, vetting, and understanding, and, and also letting them know where we want to go with our water plant in some of the, some of the projects that are going to be coming up. So that's, that's the reason, Alderman Tempest, that we thought this was the best way, and the safest way, to keep up. We, we have moved up a gentleman, a long-time employee with 15, 15-plus years, will be taken as the operating supervisor, so we're fine on that end. But we still need, in my opinion, another pair of eyes.
Yep.
To watch one of the biggest assets in Waukegan.
Okay.
There's no question about that.
Yep.
And we're going to do it very carefully, and with watchful eyes, with Baxter Woodman, with H. John Green. And I thought we might have received a, some information that Mr. McGuire might come back and try to help us out with some more, some hours during his interim time. But our water plant is in good hands. And once we finish with this process of getting a new superintendent, we expect it to be not only in good hands, but understanding what our current situation is and where we're going in the future. The future of Waukegan is to sell our water to communities out west, that is clear. So I, I, I might have stepped back, but in our words of Mr. Mozyo, Waukegan tough, we can handle it. And we'll move on from there, but thank you for bringing that up, I think. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
That's it.
All right, as have been, thank you, public safety, Alderman Mozyo.
Thank you, thank you to Alderman May for taking the committee as I was tending to business. Okay, item A, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to purchase ammunition at a state bid price of $18,785 from Ray O'Hern Inc. Company, and $15,333 from Kessler Police Supply Inc. for a total of $34,084, $85.33 under state bid contract 401-8507. Funds for this purchase will be taken from line item 100607725482, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Mozyo, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Uh, thank you, item B, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to extend the contract for professional services with best technology systems for routine maintenance and cleaning of police department shooting range for years 2018 and 2019, for a total of $20,335 in accordance to Waukegan Purchase Orders, exceptions to the competitive bid, bidding requirement, section 2-485I-4. Funds for this purchase will be taken from line item 100607725482, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, Mozyo, second by Alderman Seager, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Uh, item C, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to approve an ordinance for a handicap parking space at 1110 Yeoman Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, Mozyo, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Uh, item D, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to approve an ordinance for a handicap parking space at 513 Lincoln Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozyo, second by Alderman Villalobos, any question, questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
And item E, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to approve an ordinance for parking restrictions on Apple West of Green Bay, both sides of the street from Green Bay Road to Dilger Avenue, did I say that right, Chief? No, I screwed it up, you know?
Not Dilger.
No, no, no Dilger, sir, just west of Green Bay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My fault, do we get that then?
It dead ends, it dead ends at that recycling facility.
Right, oh, okay, all right, so it's going to be parking, do we, um...
No parking on both sides.
No parking, parking should be all, okay, it's all of Apple Streets, Apple Street.
From Green Bay West to the dead end.
There you go.
We got it.
There it is.
Thank you, Alderman May. I'm struggling tonight.
Motion by Alderman...
And I so move.
Motion by Alderman, Mozyo, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozyo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
And that is it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. Old business being done, new business. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve vendor payments dated June 18th, 2018, in total amount of $1,298,406. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Mo- uh, motion by Alderman, uh, Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve elected officials monthly expense account payroll dated June eighth twenty eighteen in a total amount of six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Uh, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to approve regular payroll dated June eighth twenty eighteen in total amount of one million five hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to approve final payout payroll dated June eighth twenty eighteen in total amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty, fifty-eight cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve sworn police officer uniform allowance payroll dated June fifteenth twenty eighteen in total amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item E, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve outdoor special events, this, uh, the sponsor has applied under the directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Uh, motion passed and carried. Item G, item Vill- most of Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve all raffle sale applications. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Most by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, uh, to approve all block party application. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Fourteen ordinances, closing items, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
Uh, thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, um, say thanks to the mayor for recognizing, uh, Reverend Eileen Shanley. It came as a surprise to me this evening. Um, Christ Episcopal Church is on Grand Avenue, and under the direction of, um, Ms. Shanley, Waukegan to College, Clean Power Lake County, the Lake County Art League, which runs the Undercroft Gallery. All of these, um, very important cultural programs in Waukegan are housed in this church under her direction. So she has, um, big shoes to fill. Um, we're really sorry to see her go, and I, I, and I have faith that the next leader of that organization will continue to involve the community in their church. So, thank you for recognizing her, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just wanna reassure my constituents in the First Ward that we are addressing the issues, um, illicit behavior that's going on, especially in the area of Tenth Street. The police force and our code enforcement, as well as our North Chicago Police, are collaborating and working together.
Alderman Seager.
Thank you. Uh, first, first of all, we, we recently had a cleanup of the southeast side of Second Ward. That's Eleventh Street, Eleven Court, Twelfth Street, and Thirteenth Street. We had approximately twenty-three volunteers from the Journing Church. And I'd like to thank Tony Campos and his wife for helping me put these volunteers together. We look forward to doing it again, and we're gonna keep on doing it until I get that Second Ward clean, especially the southeast side. I wanna thank all the volunteers. Every day, have a good time, and, uh, that's about it. I'll see y'all in about two or three weeks. Thank you.
Alderman Moseo.
Alumni, teachers, and staff come to the All Eighties Class Reunion Friday, June twenty-ninth, six P.M. to eleven P.M. Down on the lakefront. That's it.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd also like to echo Alderman May's sense in regard in Reverend, uh, Eileen Shanley Roberts. Also, of note, too, they do elder care out of, out of the church as well. Um, so she's done a great job of also getting many organizations to work out at your.
Meals that do praise.
Yeah, so, um, so thank you for recognizing her. It is gonna be sad to see her go. Um, over the past few years, I've gotten to know her, uh, pretty well. She is actually a fourth ward constituent, too, and the church is in the fourth ward. And through my time volunteering in Clean Power Lake County, and Reverend Eileen's time volunteering in Clean Power Lake County, we got to work together closely on many projects. So I am sad to hear her go. It is actually a shock to me. I didn't, I wasn't aware of this yet, but, um, I will make sure I actually talk to her and just let her know that, uh, she will be missed by me and many other residents here in Waukegan. Uh, and also, I'm sure by her parish. A lot of people, um, a lot of longtime parishioners go to that church, um, and she's made some really strong bonds with those individuals. Other things of, uh, on a different note, um, a couple of things, um, the Waukegan Public Library, uh, had their grand opening for their early learning center. Uh, for those who aren't aware, uh, the early learning center is in the children's apartment in the basement of the library, and they do an annual change out of the exhibit, and the early learning center is designed for children, uh, approximately seven, seven and under. So there's a lot of fine motor skills, gross motor skill activities there, um, primary shapes, colors, uh, letters and numbers. And so the theme for this year, which will go until next summer, is Hooray for Community Servants. And so there'll be a lot of things there, like there's a little section for the police and the fire and, uh, other civil servants there. There was a couple of firefighters present at the, at the ribbon cutting, um, so thank you for, for those that attended that. Um, and so if you have little ones, um, definitely go to the Waukegan Public Library and check out the new, the new, uh, area there. Well, it's not new, but the revamped area. Um, they do a wonderful job of changing it over and keeping it, uh, fresh and new for the residents, so they don't have to go to the, it just keeps them more interested to come to the library, which again, also helps with potential growth of literacy skills and academic success in the long term for those youth of Waukegan. So, wanted to mention that. Also, um, I wanna say, um, thank you to Don Simmerly, he's secretary director of Lake County Chamber Commerce. I was able to attend their annual golf outing, uh, this past week. I haven't gone in the past, so it was a cool experience for me. I did not golf, not much of a golfer, but I was able to socialize and network with individuals there, and there was very posi- very positive, uh, feedback regarding that event. And, um, I know Chief Bridges was there, his father, they did pretty well in their foursome, so if anybody sees him, ask him how he did. And, um, there was also the Juneteenth event that happened at Bowen Park this past Saturday. I was able to attend that briefly. Um, I really do like, uh, the new venue that they used, which was Bowen Park. In the past, my experience, Juneteenth event was mostly coordinated by College of Lake County, and was held in the courtyard at Madison Avenue and, and, uh, Genesee Street. So the venue was a lot smaller. This time, they're gonna expand across, uh, Bowen Park on the section of the, the park that's by Sheridan Road where the, um, Historical Society Building is at. Um, much like we do for Independence Day celebration, we use that, they use that space, and, um, there was a good attendance there. A lot more mix of, uh, organizations and vendors. I was able to, uh, meet new individuals from organizations that I was not aware of. Um, so that's exciting, and again, it, um, it was really good, uh, time to, to attend that event. And then also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the start of a new merchants block organization in downtown Waukegan. Uh, this is the block of Genesee Street from Madison Avenue to Clayton Street. They are now named the North Genesee International Merchants Block. So those individuals, those business owners are getting together, and this is what I like. I'm hoping they will help start a new trend in Waukegan with business owners starting to work together closer and may, may become a model, hopefully, for other merchants, um, 'cause we do have a Belvedere corridor, the businesses on Lewis Avenue, the Washington Street corridor, Grand Avenue corridor, um, that, there's a lot of commerce there, and those business owners don't always know each other. They don't always know what's going on with each other. And so to see a small bu- a block this size, um, that includes such places as like La Opera, Horse Feathers, um, Soto's Furniture, Cuban Experience, uh, Me Uniform, um, I'm missing a couple of them, so please forgive me, business owners for fractures. But again, this is a, a step forward for them to actually get together and work together, and they're taking ownership of that block. So they've done a cleanup to help improve it. Um, they're working with me and some of the departments to also improve some of the situations there, so. I'm really excited for them, and I wish them the best of luck, and I'm there to support them as much as possible. And that is all. Oh, one last thing, sorry. Uh, just quick note, uh, Clean the Amstutz is this coming Saturday, um, June twenty-third at ten A.M. And you can meet up at the North Shore Printers. I don't recall their address, but it's at the end of the Am- south end of the Amstutz. You'll run right into it. So that's at ten A.M., and that is all. Thank you.
Alright. Um, one note, uh, the Bulls family, Mr. uh, Mr. Owen Bull Senior, a long-time contractor in the city of Waukegan, passed, uh, Friday, and, uh, his service is gonna be up, so. I send our condolences on behalf of myself, city council, city of Waukegan, Mr. to the Bulls family. That being said, we got a motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsome, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Have a great Fourth of July, everybody.